Before we begin, please turn off your cellphone or use the silent feature. Please note that today's hearing is being livestreamed on YouTube as part of a pilot project. Welcome. In accordance with Section 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustments considers applications for minor variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw, permissions to extend or alter law for not-conforming uses, and consents to create new laws. Hearing procedure. To ensure a fair and timely hearing, I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications require more in-depth review. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda and ask if anyone other than the agent or the owner is present in interest and wishes to address the committee. If there are people in interest, the matter will be held until all non-contested applications have been cleared from the agenda. If your item is held, we strongly advise you to step outside to discuss any outstanding issues with the agent or applicant. If no person is present in interest, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if required. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the agent or applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. When addressing the committee, please come forward to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and file a decision request card, which I believe is available at the end of this horseshoe, so that we have correct information for our records. If you have a written submission that you read from, please hand it in to Deputy Secretary Treasurer, who is seated on my right, when you are done. First, the agent or applicant will make a presentation to the committee of the application as submitted; then individuals, either in support or opposed to the application, will be allowed to speak. If there are several speakers sharing the same view, please select a spokesperson to present the group's opinion. We want to hear your views, however, covering the same points will not advance your cause. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut only the related issues that were raised. The matter will then be taken into the committee for a discussion, sorry, and this will mark the end of all discussion and presentations. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, you may file an appeal. Almost all appeals will be dealt with by a new tribunal called the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or TLAB. For more information on TLAB, please visit their website or the CFA website. Appeal instructions will be included at the bottom of every decision. In order to receive a copy of the committee's decision and to be informed of all appeal proceedings, you must fill out the decision request card referred to earlier. Please include your email address, as TLAB will be sending notification, appeal updates by email. Please leave your completed form once again with Deputy Secretary Treasurer or member of her staff, who is seated on my right, and decisions will be mailed within three business days. Okay, now we move forward with confirmation of last meeting minutes. Panel members?
Through you, Madam Chair. I would move approval, or I would move to adopt minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, so a motion to adopt the minutes of the last meeting has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Mr. Carlson. All in favor?
Abstain because...
Okay, Mr. Russell abstains. Okay, declaration of interest. Are there any interests for this time? Slot, panel members or staff? No? Closing files. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed today?
None today.
Okay, are there any applicants who wish to withdraw their application? Yeah, if you can, please come forward.
Defer.
Defer, okay, so that's my next...
Next for...
Okay, so are there any applicants who wish to defer this application, to defer their application today? If you can, please come up, Mr. Rubenoff. Sorry, if you can just specify which item are you...
Good morning. Glenn Rubenoff. This is item number 379 Leroy.
Okay, just one second. Are there any parties in interest for 79 Leroy Avenue? Okay, 79 Leroy? No? Okay, you can proceed.
So this is a request for a deferral. My client has had reviewed the notice and realized that some of the variances were not correctly identified. There was some, they went and did a revised zoning review, and we want time to come back with a proper... There's actually fewer variances than what's requested here.
Okay. Panel members, do you have any questions?
Was this before the committee before?
No, it wasn't.
Okay.
My client's prepared to pay the redenification fees, of course.
Okay.
Do you island the pile himself?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so no more questions, discussion, or motion?
I will move deferral of the item to allow for a proper zoning notice.
Okay, so a motion to defer has been moved by Mr. Carlson, including recirculation fees, and coming back to this panel within three months? Yeah?
Thank you very much.
Sorry, just one second. Is that part of the motion? Yep. Okay, so a motion to defer has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder?
Seconded.
Second, Mr. Russell. All in favor? So the application has been deferred. Thank you. Is there another request for deferral? Okay.
David Miller, item number 4105 Robinson.
Okay, so 105 Robinson. Do we have any parties in interest for this file? 105 Robinson Street? Yep, no? Okay, so you can proceed.
Yes, my neighbor on the eastern flank has asked that we revise to return to a zero lot line setback, so change in variance for the east lot line.
Okay, so...
Detached house, but built as 101 did with their detached house on their west, or on their east side. On their west side for me and the east side for 101.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions?
And the other thing is parking, too. There apparently is no, there is an existing front yard spot, but not legal, and apparently there's no application process or any being received, so I have to find a redesign or develop a redesign that would include parking within the property.
Okay. So for next time, it's important to have these discussions before you come to a hearing in terms of with transportation, the adjacent neighbors?
Yes, this is a new thing about the parking, I think.
Okay.
It's developing.
Okay, and then panel members, do you have any questions?
Have you been before the committee before this application?
No.
How long have you made this application?
Pardon?
How long, what's the time?
Six months, I believe it was.
You have had this application in the stream?
Yes.
Okay, panel members, any other questions? Okay, no more questions, discussion, or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think the request is reasonable. I would move approval of the deferral, including recirculation fees.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including recirculation fees, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Carlson. All in favor? Okay, so the item has been deferred.
Thank you.
Okay, and are there any other requests for deferrals? No? Okay, so before I proceed to vet the agenda, I just want to specify that the committee will not be entertaining any extensive revisions at the hearing today. In the instance that you do have extensive revisions, your application will be deferred to ensure that all revisions are accurate and that all interested parties are informed decisions. Okay, so now proceed with vetting the agenda. Item number 1, 536 to 538 Brunswick Avenue, do we have the agent applicant here? Do we have any interested parties? Item number 2, 66 Triller Avenue, agent applicant, any interested parties?
Agent applicant.
Okay, do we have any interested parties for 66 Triller? Okay, so this item will be held, so once again, we strongly advise you to step outside to discuss any outstanding issues. Item number 3 has been deferred, item number 4 has been deferred, item number 5, 315 Russell Hill Drive. Okay, do we have the applicant, sorry, the agent applicant right there? Do we have any interested parties? 5, 315 Russell Hill Drive, no interested parties? Okay. Item number 6, 31 Alma Avenue, agent applicant. Okay, do we have any interested parties? Okay, so we have a party in interest right here, so once again, we strongly advise you to step outside and the item will be held. Item number 7 and 8, I believe we can deal with these applications together. Do we have the agent applicant here? So it's 54 Roxton Road. Okay, so agent applicant, do we have any interested parties in 54 Roxton Road and 56 Roxton Road? No? Okay. Item number 9, 18 Allen Avenue, do we have the agent applicant here? Okay, do we have any interested parties? 18 Allen Avenue? Item number 10, 176 Indian Grove, agent applicant, do we have any interested parties? 176 Indian Grove, no interested parties. Item number 11, 43 Glenburn Avenue, agent applicant. Okay, do we have any interested parties? 43 Glenburn, no. Item number 12, 205 Cosburn Avenue, agent applicant, do we have any interested parties? 205 Cosburn Avenue, no. Item number 13, 55 Tilsin Road, agent applicant, do we have any interested parties? Okay, so once again, the item will be held down, and we strongly advise you to step outside to discuss any outstanding issues. Item number 14, 24 Northbrook Road, agent applicant, do we have any interested parties? 24 Northbrook Road, no. Item number 15, 179 Poplar Plains Road, do we have the agent applicant here? Okay, do we have any interested parties? In 179 Poplar Plains Road, no interested parties. Item number 16, 165 Glenwood Crescent, agent applicant. Okay, do we have any interested parties? 165 Glenwood. Item number 17, 116 Waverly Road, agent applicant, do we have any interested parties? 116 Waverly Road, no. Item number 18, 87 Cadorna Avenue, agent applicant, do we have any interested parties? 87 Cadorna Avenue, no. 19, item number 19, 191 Hillsdale Avenue East, agent applicant, do we have any interested parties? 191 Hillsdale Avenue East. Item number 20, 322 Berkeley Street, agent applicant, do we have any interested parties? 322 Berkeley Street, no. Item number 21, 9 Gibson Avenue, agent applicant. Okay, do we have any interested parties? Okay, so we have a number of interested parties.
Wait, I see a hand down there.
Yeah, so we have a number of interested parties, right?
Interested parties.
Okay, so that item will be held, and we strongly advise you to step outside to discuss any outstanding issues. Okay, so that is it for this morning's time slot. So the items that are held is item number 2, 66 Triller Avenue, item number 6, 31 Alma Avenue, item number 13, 55 Tilsin Avenue, and item number 21, 9 Gibson Avenue. So all those items are held. So we're going to proceed with item number 1, 536 to 538 Brunswick Avenue. If we can have the agent applicant, please come up. Uh, which one, sorry? The 536 to 538 Brunswick Avenue?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Okay, so that item will be held, since we have interested parties. So we'll first deal with non-contested items, and then you have an opportunity to speak to the agent outside to discuss any outstanding issues. The agent is right there, okay? Okay, so item is held then. Item number 2 is held, item number 3 and 4 have been dealt with, item number 5, 315 Russell Hill Drive. Okay, if you can, please introduce yourself, but before you do, I'm going to state what the committee has in front of us. We have a plan of survey site plan, we have email correspondence from traffic planning, and then we have a staff report from development engineering.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Richard Wangle, I'm the architect for this. I have before you just a plan for an amendment to an existing driveway. My clients are renovating the house internally, but this is something that has come up. In discussions with works department, you'll see on the first page, items number 2 and items number 3 would be eliminated as variances requested. Simply, what we are asking for is there's an existing driveway on the front that is wider than was normally permitted, and I have some photographs and a site plan, and what we're adding in addition to that is a hammerhead turnaround. This is the second house south of Lonsdale on Russell Hill, which begins a one-way street. It's quite busy. Our clients are concerned about backing out, especially in the morning. It is like rush hour there in the highway, pretty well, bumper to bumper, so this will enable them to come out nose-first. Page, the second page just shows a site plan, and you'll see the existing parking or driveway width is there. It's basically to the property line and a proposed hammerhead turnaround. Originally, we're just trying to make it a little bit wider. Works wants it just narrowed to three meters, so we concur with that. And then there's a photograph on the last, second last page, it just shows the existing paving situation. All the retaining walls would remain. We would just create an opening for a hammerhead turnaround right there.
So, sorry, I'm just a little confused. So the hammerhead turnaround is still, you're still proposing to keep it?
Yes, just, it has to be, we're keeping it, it's permitted at three meters.
Okay.
We wanted to make it a little bit wider to make it a little easier, but they had issues with, they think we were going to park in it. It's really just, there's enough parking on the driveway, but...
Okay.
Just to turn around.
Okay.
And then just, so now we're essentially legalizing the width of the existing driveway.
Okay.
My clients bought this about eight months ago, and that driveway's been there for about 15 years so far.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions?
Mr. Wangle, is there any other hammerhead turnaround in that location, neighborhood?
On the street? There's double-width driveways, there's people parking perpendicular to their driveway up and down the street. It's pretty odd.
But not, but not hammerhead?
Well, I'd call them parking pads. Hammerhead is just a technical term, just to back up, but there are horizontal parking pads in front of houses. I could name about five of them on that block. I live on that block as well, and I don't, but there are several that have them.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, no more questions. So we're in committee discussion or motion?
With the revisions, I'm very comfortable with this. It's a desirable purpose and has a lower impact than other options that would accomplish the same.
It's mostly an existing condition, okay?
I would just add that seeing the house across the street has something similar and quite a lot of paving in the front, so I don't think that this is introducing something different than exists.
Okay, and the other comments?
There's transportation on.
Sorry? So they have issues with the hammerhead turnaround, but the agent has revised the, amended the application to remove those two variances. If you want, pass this. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so I'll need a motion?
I would move approval of the application, as I am satisfied that it meets the four tests.
The amended application?
Yes, as amended. Eliminating variances 2 and 3.
Okay, so a motion to approve the amended application has been moved by Mr. Carlson, second by Ms. Omen. All in favor? So the amended application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so item number 5 is still, item number 6 is being held. So we move forward to item number 7, 50...
We put it out.
Okay, is the party in interest going to speak?
Yes.
They are? Okay, so if they're going to speak, then we're just going to hold it out until we deal with all non-contested issues. Okay, so item number 7, 54 Roxton Road and 56 Roxton Road, so item number 8 as well. We'll hear it together. So the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plans, floor plans, elevations. We also have a staff report from urban forestry for 54 Roxton Road, and for 56 Roxton Road, we just have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
Bill Kwan. I'm the owner of 56 Roxton Road, and I'm representing my neighbor's 54 Roxton Road. We're just asking for, I think the legal zoning is for 40 square meters, we're asking for 41.5. We're just, my neighbor's replacing on an existing footprint. We want to tear down his garage and replace it, and on my side, I'd like to extend a little out just so I have storage space. So it's just one and a half square meters on that part, and there's an issue of soft landscaping. I have some photographs. I don't have them printed on tablet, if I can show it to you.
So you have that on your phone?
On tablet.
On tablet, so yeah, maybe if you can put on the projector, so we could see?
Okay, I'm not sure how to do that, but...
So the projector, as soon as you open up the file, you can just put it on top of the projector facing up, and it would just display on these screens.
Okay. This is the existing property, so to the left is 54, so basically, this one to tear down and rebuild on the existing pad as it is. So that's established footprint, so it's probably 1.5 square meters over as well. And my garage is one on the right, and this one takes that just to the right of the property, so just another 1.5 square meters as well.
Okay.
The other issue, I think, is soft landscaping. They're asking for 50%. 54 already doesn't have 54, 50%, there's no room to provide 50% as it is where the property's set up. So they're replacing one just right there. So that, there's no way it can be done.
What is, what is existing? What's the percentage is existing soft landscaping at present moment?
Uh, I think it's 38, 39%. I'm quite familiar with the bylaws of all that.
So yes, it's 39% for 56 Roxton and then 21% for 54 Roxton. But are you doing anything to the driveway in terms of expanding it, replacing it?
Everything is existing for driveway. At some point in future, we'll have to repave it. For now, there's nothing there. So...
Okay. Panel members, do you have any questions?
There is no repaving of the driveway proposed?
Not immediately. It has been done, but at the same time, the driveway in front, you can't get 2% because you can't drive over grass. You have the driveway, has to be, has to be driveway. So there's no way you can get enough 30% between, it's a little strip in front of the door, which I can show you on another cover. That is the property, but neighbor to the immediate left, that is where actually we put the wheel there, rethin, and do that little walkway, so otherwise they have no other access to the street. And for storage into space, you actually, hence the block from straight hard grass to storage area, you need lining space for things to come. That is the only possible place that we can increase space by, falls, just for the neighbors, and it's not enough by, not really practical to build right up to the block. Well, for us, as far as I think, we do want to have a little bit of safety for walls, and obviously, there's only 30%.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No other questions. I'm satisfied that with the existing conditions, that I would be, we're going to move a motion to approve these, both of these applications.
Including forestry condition number 2 for 54 Roxton?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, including condition number 2 for forestry for 54 Roxton, has been moved by Mr. Russell. Do we have a seconder for this motion? Okay, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application has been approved, and then we'll move another motion for 56 Roxton Road?
Same.
So same motion? Okay, so a motion to approve has... No forestry, yeah?
No forestry.
Has been moved by Mr. Russell, seconded by Mr. Carlson, all in favor. So both applications have been approved. Thank you very much. Item number 9, 18 Allen Avenue? Okay, so before the agent introduces themselves, I'll just mention what the committee has in front of us. So we have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a cover letter from the solicitor. We have email correspondence from community planning. We have 17 form letters in support from various owners on Allen Avenue. And then we have, yes, on Allen Avenue and Broadview Avenue, and then we have correspondence in opposition from 275 Broadview Avenue and 135 to 275 Broadview Avenue. Okay, if you can, please introduce yourself.
Good morning. My name is Cynthia McDougall, and I have some materials I'd like to provide to you.
Okay.
This is a streetscape of Allen, followed by a consent sign that just identifies the fact that we are, that we're placing the one-story addition, which is existing and was there when my clients purchased the house, buy your go. And I also have the right to drill, but let me just start by saying that what you have before you, in fact, is a row house, which is being sought to have variances to provide for a one-story extension, and the one-story extension exists. The purpose is to provide for a converted house, which is to add an additional unit. However, the variance for the additional unit is in fact not, sorry, there isn't a variance for the additional unit per se, and in fact, the first notice was unclear and resulted in, I believe, the objection letters, and there was a second notice, which the committee kindly issued, to explain that it's not an extension to the existing condition. It's actually taking down the existing addition, building a proper foundation and basement, building the first-story addition again in the exact same location, and then providing for interior renovations. In terms of changes to the house, if you look at the streetscape, as I showed you, it's quite clear that it's a, it's a, it's a house that's in need of little love and care. In fact, one of the co-owners works at DRA Architects, and as shown on the elevation, the brick is going to be restored, and some of the heritage features are going to be repaired and replaced, for example, stained glass window, and the front steps, which approach sideways, are going to be going down forward. So it'll be an improvement and won't change the existing character. The clients went, and in fact, there are 22 letters of support. I have a whole package, but I just wanted to identify that the one person who's objecting for an expansive letter, in fact, lives in the condominium projects to the rear, and has a place here, and in fact, their photos relate to a development that's not at all related to what's in front of you today, and they also clearly don't understand the existing condition. So there was extensive consultation with community to show the plans and what was happening, and so the two objections, in fact, one is unrelated and isn't actually binding, and the second person, who doesn't identify where they're located, and also raises issues of construction noise and speculation and nothing that relates to variances. So with that, I was just going to run through the variance in the cells, if you have any particular concerns or interests.
So instead of you doing that, we'll just ask you questions.
Sure.
Panel members, do you have any questions? So you're basically rebuilding an existing condition, including the rear deck, has...
Yes.
Okay.
The depth, is there any change in the depth with your rebuilding?
No, the depth of the house is identical, and that's reflected in the notice and the variances.
The landscape space, you're moving to zero?
It actually is, is zero now, and if I could, if you look on the front pages of the plan, if I could just show you them, probably, it's in your pocket, but it might not be accessible. So I can just extract it, what you already have, and if you look at the little house that is painted right now, and you can look at the front, so the stairs will segue, and they're going to go straight down, but that's a hard surface, and practically speaking, everyone on the street, as you can see on the streetscape, has a hard surface, so it makes sense to retain that. But what's happening in the backyard, is it going to be a kind of a lot of plantings in the back, taking, it's a bit harder in the rear. So there will be improvements to the entire, to the entire outdoors, but it, to install traditional landscaping wouldn't make sense in this context, and actually isn't in keeping with the...
Are there any other questions?
So, Ms. McDougall, the, the requirement that they're seeking here on the zero landscaping...
Yes.
It, there's nothing you can do, is that what you're saying to me?
Well, in fact, we're saying zero landscaping, but if you look at the plans that were filed, there's, there's actually a planter box at the, at the rear with planting. That's, that's quite clear. If I can show you on those, on those plants?
I think you told us about that already.
Yeah, no, so, so Madam, so when you say there's nothing we can do about it, well, in fact, we're actually providing landscaping in a planter box to the... in fact, we're actually providing landscaping in a planter box to the rear of the property at the, at the rear elevation, at the rear lot line. So I think that's an appropriate place to provide soft landscaping with plants that will do well in a shady area, and in fact, the entire area is going to be improved and made more attractive.
Yep, any other questions?
No other questions.
No more questions, discussion, or a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, clearly, these variances are existing, and as Ms. McDougall said, they're making improvements to the site. I think that what's being proposed fits within the context of the neighborhood meets the four tests, and if there are no other comments, then I would move approval of the application.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen, do we have a seconder?
Yeah, one second.
Second by Mr. Russell, all in favor. So the application's been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number ten, one seventy-six Indian Grove. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, we have a cover letter from the agent, we have a staff report from Urban Forestry, and then we have five form letters in support from various nearby neighbors on Indian Grove, including the directly adjacent neighbor one seventy-four. Okay, yeah, if you can please introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Adam Molson, I'm acting as agent for the homeowners Esther and Sebastian Bianchi, who are just here in the second row. Myself and my wife Michelle here are actually the owners of the adjacent property at one seventy-four Indian Grove. So if you see the slides, one seventy-six is on the right, and one seventy-four, which we own, is on the left. You can go to the next slide. So we at one seventy-four went to committee last year and received approval to build a third level addition, as well as a rear addition and a two-car garage. So the rendering you see on the left is what we went to committee with, and you can see from the photo on the right that we're permitted and currently under construction. Next slide. So Sebastian and Esther are applying to committee for permission to do a renovation to essentially match what we are doing on our site and mirror it and kind of restore the symmetry of the semi-detached dwellings. So this includes an identical extension to the roof, where we're just extending the pitch of the existing building up a little bit further to allow for the third floor. And this will, again, as I mentioned, allow them to match when viewed from the street. And the only reason you sort of see graphical differences here is just we've been using different architects, but it is, we've worked very closely in concert to make sure it will be a matching pair.
Okay.
Um, so the next slide. So this drawing just shows the sections of the two property, again, just to show that the massing to the rear is also designed to be identical, so with, if you can maybe shift it slightly, just there's an identical step back on the second floor, so that the roofline will, again, be identical, and then the balconies on the back are, again, meant to marry up completely. Um, if you can go to the next slide. So the application, sorry, can you just slide it over, is there a way to zoom it out slightly, do you know? Just keeps getting cut off. The application requires eight variances in total, six related to the house and two related to the garage. This here is a summary of the variances related to the house, sorry, it's a little cut off, but essentially, it just falls into four main categories, being the side setbacks, the height, the density, and the landscaping. So if you're okay, I'll just speak very briefly to these four variances. So with regards to the side setback, the variances to allow a zero meter setback to the south neighbor, which in this case, we've already created that condition with our extension at one seventy-four, so we have built up to the lot line by extending the party wall. They're essentially just building against this party wall extension that we have constructed, but again, a variance is required for that. With regards to the height, it's a similar situation, where again, under the approval for one seventy-four, the party wall was extended upwards, and so they're, again, just applying for permission to build against what has now been established by the neighboring application, and same thing with the sidewall height to match. Density, an FSI of zero point nine seven is requested when the permitted is point six. This is identical to what was approved with the neighbor, our property at one seventy-four, and as I'll get to in another couple of slides, there's ample precedent on the street for this level of FSI in this neighborhood. We can go to the next slide, please? So this was, again, just to show some of the precedents that we were talking about, so on the right side, you can see ten point seven meter was approved just one block north at two seventy-two Indian Grove. There's, these homes are currently two stories and are being converted to three, but there's three-story homes immediately to the south, immediately across the street, and immediately behind is actually four-story townhouses. So again, the height is not anything different than neighborhood. You can see on the bottom left, that's the house immediately south of this pair, it is a three-story home that's already higher, and so we're essentially just bringing ourselves up to that same height. If we can go to the next slide, please? So I guess we don't have any variances required for units, but I just wanted to bring that up, because with the original application, a couple of people had raised that as a concern, so we just include that in our presentation in case there was going to be opposition, which there's not. This one, one seventy-seven, is directly across the street, it got approved at one point two zero FSI, so quite a bit higher than what we're asking for. There's another home just down the street that got approved at one point zero three at one sixty-four Indian Grove as well. And then the, the last variance related to the house is rear yard softscaping, so the bylaw requirement is fifty percent, the applicants here are requesting forty-five percent. At one seventy-four, we actually got approved at thirty-six percent because we had a rear basement walkout, which is not included in the application at one seventy-six. And then you can see these two photos on the right are the rear yards of the properties immediately to the south at one seventy and one seventy-two. You can see quite a bit of hardscaping garages in the rear yard that generally show a character on this stretch of less than fifty percent soft landscaping in the rear.
Okay.
Next slide, please.
We almost have five minutes, if you can just quickly wrap up, and then if we have any questions, you can...
Sure, okay. There's just two, two quick variances for the garage, so one is related to height, which is a technical one, because the grading of the site is very strange, the lane is actually a full story above the front of the house, and I have photos for that if you want to see it, but that's why it's calculated five point three because of the average grade, where the actual structure itself fits within the four-meter bylaw from the slab. And then the area, it's larger than the forty meters permitted, but again, it's just so that we can fit two cars plus a walkway to get out. I have a plan of that if you want to see.
Okay. Okay, panel members, do you have any questions?
Just on the garage, Mr. Molson, the, you're looking for a floor, floor area of fifty meters square, which is ten meters more than what is normally there. How many of the garages in there, in the area have that fifty meters square, fifty point?
The one that we got approved at one seventy-four was, I believe, fifty-two point six. I don't know, there's a photo here on the left of a garage, it's just down the street at one sixty-four and one sixty-six, I don't, I can't tell you exactly what the square meters are, but as you can see from the photos, they have a, a large footprint as well that is the entire width of the lot, so it is comparable in size to what is being proposed here.
Any other questions? Okay, no more questions, so we're in this, in discussion, in committee for discussion.
Thank you.
So discussion, I'm satisfied that this is restoring the symmetry of the semi and such desirable for the community, so I would move approval.
Including forestry...
Including the forestry condition...
Number two.
All second, Madam Chair.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including forestry condition number two, has been moved by Mr. Carlson, second by Ms. Omen, all in favor. So the application has been approved. Thank you very much. Item number eleven, forty-three Glenburn Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, we have the cover letter from the agent, we have email correspondence from Transportation Services, and then we have staff reports from community planning as well as Transportation Services. If you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee, my name is Paul Johnston, I'm a planning consultant, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, panel members, would you like a presentation or proceed directly into questions?
Um, I think we can go to questions.
Uh, we'll just go directly into questions.
All right.
Um, are you aware of the staff reports?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so you're aware of the, the planning report regarding variance number one?
Yes, and I'd like to, I'd like an opportunity to comment on that.
Are you going to be amending, or are you amending?
No, we're not amending, we'd like to comment on that.
Okay.
Which we did in our cover letter, which we have done with staff, which we're happy to do with you. So in terms of the height variance, the, to be candid, we were somewhat surprised through discussions with staff related to their concern, as we set out in the, in the cover letter, the existing condition of the finished floor elevation is an existing condition, so it's a half meter already, the first floor finished elevation is above the permitted finished floor. In our research, we found twenty-one height variances in the past ten years alone, and twenty of those twenty-one exceeded the proposal that's before you. And at least three of those twenty-one approvals were also for flat roofs, and one of which was on the street immediately to the south, and I will just, um... My colleague will just point to the subject location in blue on, on the visual. So this, as you know, is just west of Victoria Park Avenue, and highlighted with the red stars are some of the additional, some of the height variances that were granted, and, and at least those are flat or what we call shallow roofs in the area. And at least three of those properties included height variances that exceeded the subject This is a property immediately to the south, that's, Homestead Avenue is the street one block south, so this would be within, within half a block of the subject property. This was an approval granted in two thousand and sixteen, as I recall, for heights of, you can see the notes, eight point nine and nine meters. So that's a feature of the neighborhood, and then, a little further, is an address, if you can just adjust that, at one twenty-nine Yardly Avenue, that's three or four blocks to the north, within an area we consider to be part of the neighborhood, that was an approval granted by the committee at nine meters. And then I have a series of photographs, which my colleague, Alex, will just run through, these are other flat roof or very, very shallow roof buildings that have been constructed in the area, some with variances, some without. But the, the comment that I would just conclude with is that the staff have indicated that flat roofs are not a feature of the neighborhood, and respectfully, we disagree with that, and we also find that there have been approvals granted by the committee for flat roofs with heights in excess of the eight point seven one that's being sought in this, in this situation. Just to circle back to the proposal itself, to remind you, this is an existing bungalow, the, there would be no change to the three of the four walls, there's a modest addition to the rear, which itself does not trigger any variances, so all of the other variances that are before you are existing conditions, and the issue, as staff have identified and you have identified, is the question of height, but the other features of the site are, I would suggest, not at issue. And I think while staff comment that they're concerned in part because the site sits higher than the street, in fact, I would express it in a different way, that's one of the reasons for the required variance, this is nothing more than a second story going on a bungalow, and, and that really is, in our opinion, the reason why this is an appropriate proposal.
I have a question, so you mentioned, so the first floor is an existing condition, the height from the ground level. How about the second floor, is there any opportunity to lower the ceilings on the second floor to reduce the height issue?
The second floor ceilings, ceiling height... is two point seven meters, so that's, if I'm converging is correct, that's about eight, that's eight feet. So that's essentially the minimum.
Okay. Okay, panel members, any other questions? Okay, so we have no more questions, so we're in committee discussion.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm comfortable with the application as it stands, and I believe that the, the applicant have provided fair justification of, of what has happened in the neighborhood and has provided, and in fact, has gone out and done well to do a search on the neighborhood to see the applications that have been made and the, and the developments that have been made. And, and I'm, and I'm, and I mean, in agreement with the, with the, with the presenter, that, that the staff report may have unjustly dealt with this application in view of what is existing presently and what exists there. So I'm, I'm prepared to support this application.
Okay, any other comments?
Um, no, I would, I would agree with, with Mr. Russell's comments, I think that the, the agent has, has given us sufficient evidence that clearly shows the flat roofs exist as well as heights and density and massing. I'm not sure if Mr. Russell is going to move a motion, but assuming he is, will you be including the transportation condition?
Just transportation condition, yes.
Okay. So, so I'm assuming then the motion is on the table...
Yeah, the motion is to, to approve it as presented by the applicant, including transportation condition.
Okay, transportation condition in November first report.
Madam Chair, if I may make an observation, I find myself agreeing with the planning report.
Okay, so let's, let's first finish the discussion then.
I do find myself agreeing with the planning report, insofar as there have been similar approvals, I think that this committee may have, in general, gone slightly too far in approving bungalow top-ups, and I find planning this compelling point about this one being particularly noticeable, we would stop back, and I'm not really able to support this application.
Um, so I'm slightly more conflicted, if this was a new build, I probably would be in favor of refusing the application, but since the, the height of the first floor is an existing condition, I'm okay with the top-up, okay? So, so I'll need a motion from one of the...
My motion continues to remain that I move for approval of the application as presented by the applicant, and the applicant has presented satisfactory justification, and there is no need to draw back, and one, because there may have been errors in the past, the fact is the correct of the neighborhood is now compromised in accordance to what was there. So I move approval with the transportation report.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including transportation condition outlined in November first report, has been moved by Mr. Russell, do we have a seconder? Second by Ms. Omen, all in favor. Dissenting, so Mr. Carlson is dissenting, so the application has been approved. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Item number twelve, two oh five Cosborne Avenue, the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, if you can please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Jan Teamster, I'm the architect and agent for the owners.
Okay, so panel members, would you like a presentation and go directly into questions?
Questions.
We'll go directly into questions, there are only three variances. Okay, panel members, do you have any questions?
Uh, what about amenity space, what's going on here, you've taken it away.
The existing space that we're converting is actually a storage area for the, for the building, it's not amenity space, it's been empty for quite a long time. The many, the space that we're, for the variance on the many, the space, it's four square meters, a total of eight square meters, four indoor and four outdoor, we have provided the four, each unit has a outdoor amenity space of ten square meters for each apartment, but we don't have the four square meters for the interior amenity space.
Why don't, why don't you need any parking?
Parking, there are a hundred and sixty parking spaces on the first, on the first and second level of the underground garage, there are a hundred and sixty units, of the hundred and sixty units, only ninety-eight have parking permits, and that leaves all the parking on the first level, which gives, is, I believe is ninety, sorry, is, what was the first level? Hundred and eight on the first level and fifty-two on the second level. The second level, nobody parks on the second level, it's totally empty. I submitted a photo, a couple of photographs of the base, of the lower level to the committee, I don't know if you have those or not.
Let me just, I don't...
I have them on my cell phone, if you'd like to look at them.
I don't think so, but if you can just put one on the projector. So I'm assuming with the parking spaces that are sitting empty, any future tenants for these units will be able to lease those, is that correct?
Yes, the whole 52 units, the spaces in the basement are totally empty.
Okay, and then how much amen, indoor amenity space do you have currently for the building?
The building doesn't have any at all.
Panel members, any other questions? Okay, no questions?
No.
No questions.
So we're in committee discussion?
Through you, Madam Chair. I have no concerns with this application. There are no exterior changes. In terms of the parking, clearly, the building has parking available, but having said that, there is a transit stop right in front of the building, as well as a few more just down the street with different buses. So I am comfortable with this and would be prepared to move approval.
Okay, questions?
Mr. Lang, the FSI, for floor space indexes, you're seeking is 0.57. What's there presently?
What's that representing?
Yeah, what is there presently? What is existing?
Oh, it's currently a bungalow. The first floor is... The first floor is 806. Which is about 25 percent. So this is a common addition on the street. Before we did any planning, we went up and down the street, we researched about six properties that are all exactly the same. I can give you those addresses and those numbers.
Yep, if you can go through them.
So the, there's a person across the street there, there's a couple, that's the south end at the top there. And I can give you those numbers. So the FSI at seven is 50 percent, at 11 is 64 percent, 43 is 76 percent, 35 is 61 percent. If I continue here, it's 71, 69, 64. When we submitted the plan and did the research, we felt that we were in line with other proposals for second floor additions on the street. And at the same time, we had talked to the neighbors on both sides, who had no problem with the application, including the neighbors that are directly across the street. I have a photo on my phone, I can show you these projects.
Sure. Panel members, any other questions?
That's, those are the ones down the street that I was referencing. That's, those are existing bungalows, they did second floor additions on top of them. There were about three or four of them in a row. The subject property is further up the road between two bungalows, but again, the neighbors on either side had no problem. And then, just in regards to the coverage, there's an existing rear yard garage that the owner wanted to maintain, which is, I believe, would cause the extra coverage requirement that we're asking for.
Any other questions? If no questions, we're in committee discussion.
I just want to say that the, what's being proposed is clearly fits within the context of the neighborhood, and as stated, there are a lot of examples, and it seems the applicant has gone out of their way to stay within the same kind of massing and number, and numbers in terms of the variances. So I'm comfortable with this application.
Okay, so I'll need a motion then.
Through you, Madam Chair, I would move approval of the application, as I feel it meets the four tests and fits within the context of the neighborhood.
Okay, so motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
Seconded.
Second, Mr. Russell, all in favor. So the application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 15, 179 Poplar Plains Road. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a C of A decision affecting the subject property. We have correspondents from the owner in response to a letter of opposition from Karen Bender. We have correspondents also from the owner in regards to professional arborist report. And then we have correspondents in concern from 108 Poplar Plains Road, and then correspondence opposition from 23 Russell Hill Road. If you can please introduce yourself. So if you can have silence in the room, the hearing's still going on.
Good morning, my name's Graham Smith. I'm managing partner at Altius Architecture, 109 Atlantic Avenue, Toronto. I'm representing Miriam Dowd, the owner of the property. The subject property is a legal law to record, it's currently vacant. The proposed house requires four variances, fairly normal for the South Hill neighborhood for height, depth, and floor space index, and a very minor one for the height of the first floor. If there are immediate questions, I'm happy to host them, otherwise, I'm happy to discuss the variances that are being sought.
My question is about the floor space index. You're moving, what's there presently? You're moving from the...
There's nothing there presently. The floor space index for the South Hill neighborhood, as well as neighborhoods like Forest Hill, Rosedale, at 0.35, is considerably under what the averages are for the neighborhoods. The site plan overlay here, you can see the proposed building at 179 is highlighted in green, and you can see the other houses, particularly up on Edmund. The typical density for the neighborhood is between 0.6 and 0.8. That has been the historic approvals from the Committee of Adjustment. At 0.56, you can see this is a two-story home, the footprint is considerably smaller than all of its neighbors. It maintains substantial front and rear yards, which are generous for the neighborhood.
Does the FSI include the basement as well?
It does not.
Okay, any other questions? No questions? Okay, in committee discussion?
I think this is extremely typical proposal for the area. It is entirely in keeping, and we'd be comfortable making a motion if there's no further comments.
I mean, the only comment I have was, we have a C of A 2015 approval, FSI of 0.66 times.
0.66.
Six times, 66 times, yeah. So it's a lot more than, yeah, no other comments though.
Okay, I would move approval of the application then, as I'm satisfied that it's in keeping the character of the neighborhood, and it meets the four tests.
Okay, so motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Russell, all in favor. So the application has been approved. Thank you. Item number 16, 165 Glenwood Crescent. The committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a staff report from Urban Forestry, we have correspondence in support, nine form letters in support from various owners slash occupants on Glenwood Crescent, and then we have correspondence in concern slash interest from 27 Stag Hill Drive. If you can please introduce yourself.
My name is Bobak Shajeri. I'm the architect and applicant for this project. Contacted recently from City Planner, and just before receiving that, we received all the letter of supports from the neighbors, but after the receipt of those, that call, we also revised the drawings to reduce the variances. And I have the new set of drawings here, if you want me...
So how many variances are you changing?
I'm, we are dropping the first one, which is for the stairs going to the basements.
Okay, so variance number one on the 2013 is being deleted then?
Yes. And variance number two, which is the lot coverage, has been reduced to 40 percent from what is in application, which is 42.
How much is that in meter squared?
It's close to nine square meters.
Sorry?
Sorry?
No, meter squared.
So you're...
It's reduced, nine square meters.
Okay, so can you give us the 40 percent in terms of meter squared? It's like 190...
Actually, I have a letter, it's 194.75.
Okay, meter squared, okay. Anything else you're changing? I, we, I don't know if we have this letter.
Is this 165 Glenwood?
Yeah.
We don't have any of this.
Oh, I sent it the other day.
Yeah, it's November 5th, so.
So...
Also changing the building heights?
No, the building height stays the same, at nine meter, which is approved for one of the immediate neighbors at 169 Glenwood.
Okay, but you're changing...
And the GFA has been reduced slightly after these modifications.
Okay, panel members, so just one second. So during my opening remarks, I mentioned that we're, we don't deal with alterations on the fly. Panel members, would you say that this is a substantial change to the application?
It's a change towards reducing all those...
What else are you changing? The GFA you changed, what else is...
The length, building length?
The building length, it's, yeah, it's a clarification mainly for the building length, because the length that is identified in the...
You're keeping... That you're keeping.
In the zoning review is only for the second floor. If you look at that drawing at the back, the two-story part is only 13 meters deep, and after that, it has been reduced to one story and the setbacks, so there is very minor effects on the neighbors in terms of shadow or overlooking to their backyards. So, and additional two feet that is over that 17 meters is only for the projection of the bay window in the ground floor.
Okay, panel members, so has...
That's it?
Yeah.
Number variances have been changed? It is a reduction, and we have support from both directly adjacent neighbors.
Actually, four on each side and one opposite side. And those letter of supports are even before all these reductions from variances.
Okay, so you're changing variance one, you're deleting variance one. Variance two, you're changing to 40 percent, which is 194.75 meters squared. Variance three, you're leaving intact. Variance four, you're leaving intact as well, right? It's just a clarification in your cover letter?
Yes.
And then variance five, you're changing...
What's variance five?
For, to 0.68 times, instead of 0.69 times, to 330.2 meters squared. And then you're also changing the parking, proposed parking size, which is very...
Parking is only the interior design issue, because there is, because of the shape of the building, there is a pier. That 5.2 is only the distance from that pier to the end wall, which is in between the two parkings. Both parkings has enough space for, as per the zoning, 5.6 by 2.9, but only that, for that.
Okay, so that variance will leave intact then?
Yes.
There is 0.0...
That's only the clarification.
So it's three variances that you're changing. Okay, so panel members...
Doesn't the parking change under the old bylaw as well, the variance or not? Isn't he changing?
He says...
Everything to 2.88 and 5.0. Are you, it's, are you, what about under the old bylaw?
Yeah, no, I'm, it's only the clarification. It's one inch is smaller, that 2.9 is required, what we have is 2.88.
Right, so it's changing under the old bylaw as well?
Yes, yeah.
Are you changing it, or it's just a clarification?
Are you amending that as well?
Old bylaw.
No, it's only the clarification.
Okay, so we'll leave the parking variances as they are right now. So panel members...
So we're not changing the parking variances then?
We're not changing the parking variances.
No.
No.
So you're changing the, you're deleting the width of the rear stairs, and then changing lot coverage FSI?
Yes.
May I respond to the chair's inquiry about whether this is a substantial revision or not? While it is a reduction, my inclination is always to, is to, a preference to recirculating when there's meaningful changes. I think this is meaningful. I would prefer to defer this application.
I mean, because like in terms of the site plans, do we have the new site plans?
Yes, yeah, it's all, I can, yeah, I can hand it, and all those things are mentioned there, like a bubble around, and it was sent to the staff just a day after they contacted me, but because they contacted me very late, like last week, they said that just print them and bring them to the meeting, to the hearing, because it's too late for the circulation.
So you have a set then, for the...
Yes, I have a set here that I can hand you.
Yeah, can I have the revised drawings? The question is, do we still, do we defer this application or...
Through you, Madam Chair. I mean, I normally would agree with Mr. Carlson in this case. We're looking at three changes and one eliminate, eliminating one variance here, and there are reductions. Considering the amount of support that this application had as is, I'm not sure there's any percentage in recirculating and deferring in this particular case. Especially because we do have the plans to attach with the revisions.
I would actually agree with Ms. Omen, considering the both adjacent neighbor support for the plans and the fact that the revisions are to be more in keeping of the bylaws. And just the fact that, you know, if there are any issues in terms of the site plans, that would be reflected in the building permit challenges that the agent might have in the future.
I would like to add that the committee also didn't have any comments from planning, that the applicant has come here in good faith, having had discussions with planning, and trying to make amendments in more keeping with the conversations that were had with the planning department.
How about you, Mr. Russell?
I'm just going through this to see...
If you can just, so Mr. Russell's going through this, if you can just show us on the site plans exactly where you made the changes to reduce the FSI and the lot coverage?
So if you look at the back, the area which is bubble around in this area, we set this back another 800 millimeters, where before it was aligned with the line of the garage, we reduced this area, and the setback in the bylaw is four feet or 1.2 feet, so I can now move to 1.8. Like 6 feet, 6.3 feet. And that's one thing. Another thing is the size of this, that's going to the station on the back, before it was 1.5 meters, it's now 1 meter. So that's going to the setback, so that's a very small difference. And the reduction in the FSI is, or GFA is coming from the same, it's like, and the basement is, that wall is back right now, and the size of the building on the back is, that's reduced 800 meters. And the size of the, uh, that's going to the basement and this is the back.
Okay, um, Mr. Russell, do you have any other comments in terms of moving forward with the...
I, I'm going to agree with Ms. Omen on this one, but, uh, I think, you know, in the future we'll, um... Because it's severe minor changes, um, I, I have some apprehension about changes, uh, when I don't have time to review them before we come to committee meeting, but since it's a minor, I will, I'll agree with Ms. Omen.
Okay, so we'll move forward with, uh, with, um, discussing and then, um, providing a motion for this variance application in terms of refusal or approval.
Through you, Madam Chair. I, uh, I think that the, um, amended proposal is in keeping with what's in the neighborhood. It's got a lot of support from, uh, adjacent neighbors as well as many others in the neighborhood. Uh, the revisions that have been made clearly reflect some of the, um, changes that, um, were requested by the planning department. So if there are no comments, I would be prepared to move approval of the amended application.
Forestry two?
Yeah. So if there's no comments, so I would move approval, um, of the application, removing variance number one, revising variance number two to forty, um, forty percent, which equals one hundred and ninety-four point seven-five square meters. Number three stays as is. Number four would be revised to seventeen point one meters. Number five would be revised to six point zero, uh, coverage, which is three hundred and thirty point two square meters. And the rest of the variances remain as is, and including forestry condition number two.
Sorry, six point zero eight, so...
Zero point six eight times. I, I thought the parking was gonna be left as is, or are you changing, are we relieving it?
Number five is, uh...
Number five, just a, it's zero point six eight times, right?
Yeah, point, point six zero is what I had.
Yeah, zero point...
Or point, point six...
Zero point six eight.
Eight, sorry.
Times, and it's one thirty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Point six eight, three, three, zero point two.
Okay, and then, and then the park...
And then attaching the, uh, plans as submitted to the committee today.
Okay, so we have, uh, motion to approve the amended application, including the forestry condition as well as the condition, uh, to attach the plans that were submitted, submitted today. Moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Russell, all in favor? Okay, so the application has been approved. The amended application has been approved. Thank you. Item number seventeen, one sixteen Waverly Road. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have the cover letter from the agent. We have email correspondence from Right-of-Way Management as well as, oh, that's it. And then we have five form letters in support from, uh, a number of owners slash occupants on Waverly Road, including the, both directly adjacent neighbors on one fourteen and one eighteen. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Uh, my name's Carolyn Moss, Moss and Architects. I'm the agent for the owners.
Okay, so panel members, presentation. I'll directly into questions. We'll move directly into questions.
Um, you're aware of the request for semi-permeable pavers?
Yes.
Your, your variance number one, Ms., uh, Ms. Moss, um, your, your front yard setback, you're, you're looking at, um, the requirement is for point, for two point five meters, no closer than that. Uh, you're going to encroach three point five eight, which is almost seventy-five percent more. Uh, how do you explain that?
Um, the adjacent neighbors, uh, they're, they're measuring to the front wall. They both have open porches. The existing house at one ninety-six Waverly has an enclosed porch currently, um, and then there's a landing out front, so it's essentially an existing condition.
Where do, uh, you're going to have a parking in front?
Yes, so the existing house has a reverse slope driveway to a basement, um, parking spot. And so the purpose to infill that driveway and create a level parking where the driveway was, the access to that underground parking, um, and then maintain, uh, a portion of that sort of underground, the, sort of, the access to the basement for, uh, a walkout because there's cyclists and they want to get their bikes up and down.
Yeah, but we have a report from Right-of-Way Management on this one?
Uh, yes, uh, we're from Transportation. We have no objections. And then the owner contacted Right-of-Way Management to obtain permit for any landscaping of city bulk.
Yeah, we worked with Right-of-Way Management in July to negotiate. We had originally a five point one five meter parking spot, and we worked with them and we adjusted our walkout, um, to come to an agreement at five point three meters, um, for the length of the parking, so it can be maintained entirely on, uh, the owner's property.
Okay, and then I have a question in regards to the front basement walkout. So how common is this feature in the neighborhood?
Um, a front basement walkout in that neighborhood, I think there's some direct ones not associated with a parking pad, um, but I'm not sure that I've seen, I haven't done one on that street. I have a little 3D image if you want to have a look to see what it...
Uh, sure, if you can put it on the projector, that would be great.
So that shows the existing house. So currently, the house has a, an enclosed porch across the entire front. And so to be able to, um, achieve the parking space requirement entirely on their property, we're actually removing a portion of that enclosed porch and then putting in a railing for the, um, but it's, it's set quite far back, so I don't think it's something that will be immediately, uh, visible from the street, also due to the, um, the height difference from the sidewalk to the, um, to where that guard will be.
Okay, panel members, any other questions? Okay, no questions. All were in committee discussion. So there is a request for, uh, semi-permeable, semi-permeable pavers.
Already perced the application.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Um, so maybe redundant then to include it as a condition? Okay, so I'll just rely on you, um, panel members, um, any further discussion? Okay, if no discussion, I need a motion.
I would move approval of the application as I believe to be minor nature and desirable for the development of the site. Uh, there's no reason not to include the condition that the, uh, front parking be constructed with, uh, permeable paving, uh, so I will include that.
Okay.
And there is no forestry.
And actually, I just want to clarify that the city report specifies the city portion of the boulevard, so that I think it is prudent to include it.
Okay, so a motion to approve the variance application, including the condition to construct the city portion of the front parking, um, pad, uh, to be constructed with, uh, semi-permeable pavers, has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Omen, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eighteen, eighty-four, eighty-seven, sorry, Card, uh, Cadorna Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a staff report from community planning and urban forestry. Can please introduce yourself?
Uh, this is Parisa Amiriya. I'm an architect and, uh, the applicant on this, uh, application. Do you need any presentation or...
Uh, we'll go directly into questions, uh, looking at the time right now. So, um, panel members, do you have any questions?
You're aware of the staff report?
Yes, we are. And the urban forestry. Technically, they are not counting the detached garage, which creates the variance.
And the rear, rear yard softscape is existing?
It is existing, yes, because we are demolishing the, uh, back portion of existing addition and the existing deck, and we are building the second story addition.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Yep, no questions? No questions, uh, we're in committee discussion?
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, there are a lot of two-story homes in this block, especially on the other side of the street. Uh, what's being proposed here fits within the context of the area, and I believe that the variances are indeed minor. So I would be prepared to move approval, including the condition in the planning report dated November first and forestry condition number one.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including the two outlined conditions, have been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder? Okay, so seconded by Mr. Russell, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you. Item number nineteen, one ninety-one Hillsdale Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have two photographs of the, of the front deck on the subject property. And then we have correspondence in support from one ninety-one Hillsdale Avenue, as there is four from letters in support from various addresses on Hillsdale Avenue East. If you can please introduce yourself?
Um, I'm Andy Reelband from Two Birds Design, the agent and, um, representing my clients, uh, here from one ninety-one Hillsdale.
Uh, panel members, do you need a presentation, or would you like to go directly into questions? So we'll go directly into questions.
Front entrance, you, front, front, new front, you're, you're buffing on all the edges here. You're going to new, new front entrance stairs.
Yeah, we're basically taking the, um, footprint of the, um, open porch and extending the front of the house to the edge of that, um, which you can see is sort of keeping it in line with the adjacent houses.
So you're keeping, you've been in line with the, the other houses on the street?
Yes, well, the adjacent ones, um, for sure, um, and most of them, yes.
So, uh, one eighty-nine and one ninety-three, the front wall is where your porch is currently?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so the front entrance stairs will be located on a variance number four, um, from the front line, front lot line of zero meters. So it's right on the line.
Sorry, what's that?
Number four. Your, your...
Oh, yes.
Your front entrance stairs will be located right on the lot line.
Right, so...
Front lot line.
Yeah, we require many stairs. This is a very hilly, obviously, street, um, so the stairs take up quite a large portion of the front. And in order to gain access to where we've located the front door, we've turned them just so they're not a, a straight run right up from running alongside the, um, driveway. There's some green area in between. So we've run them sort of a little bit further over and, um, turned them so that they can meet the new front door.
But yours would be the only house there that will have, um, your front stairs in the lot line. We want it.
Pardon me?
Yours, yours will be the only unit that will have your stairs right on the front lot line, as far as I can see.
Most of the stairs actually just run straight towards the house, so they're just like a straight run there. It's, obviously, it's a very hilly street, so most houses have lots of stairs taking up their front lawn, front, um...
Lot line?
Yeah, lot line, sorry.
And then in terms of the converted, the converted garage to a shed, uh, so that's an existing condition, like, in terms of the lot coverage, you're not making a big...
Yeah, so that's actually just there. The, um, examiner, I guess, noted it on the plans that it's not been, it's not been approved, I guess, but we're not making any changes to it. It's just, it's still, it, that, it's, that's just where it sits.
Okay, and then, um, in terms of, uh, support letters, so we have, we have any support letters from one eighty-nine? Okay, so we don't have one, one ninety-three. Okay, uh, panel members, any other questions? Okay, um, so no more questions. We're in committee discussion or a motion? We have no staff reports, no, or conclusions? Okay, uh, discussion or a motion?
Satisfied that this is an appropriate development of the site and is minor nature, so there's no further discussion. I would, um, approve of the application.
Okay, so motion approved, has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Omen, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty, uh, three twenty-two Berkeley Street. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, survey, sorry, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and then we have a staff report from urban forestry. If we can have the agent applicant, please come up.
My name's Madeline Fillmore, and I am the agent for three two two Berkeley.
Okay.
I just don't know if you want me to do a presentation or if you just want to...
Uh, we'll go directly into questions unless the panel members want a presentation, but it seems that they don't. Okay, panel members, um, any questions?
Ms. Fillmore, you're going in a depth which is five meters beyond what is required in the bylaw.
Uh, so, yeah, the existing house is already over, it's already at a sixteen or eighteen point six two meters, and the addition is actually just a box bay window on the second floor that it's extending another point five six of a meter.
So the nineteen point one eight meters is just applies to the second floor?
Yeah.
Okay, panel members, any other questions? No? Okay, I see, yeah. Um, okay. No other questions? If there's no other questions, um, we're in committee, um, so we'll have, we have forestry condition number one attached to this file. Any, any discussion? No, this is minor. Go ahead.
This is, these are extremely minor and largely existing conditions.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no further comment, I'm approve of the application as I believe to be extremely minor nature and I've written for tests.
Can I second with forestry number one?
Okay, so a, a motion to approve the, uh, to the application, uh, including the forestry condition, has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Seconded by Ms. Omen, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you. So before we proceed with the, uh, contested items, uh, we're just gonna take, um, five minute, five minute washroom break? And then when we get back, we'll start with item number one, five thirty-six to five thirty-eight Brunswick Avenue? Okay, we'll start with item number one, 536 to 538 Brunswick Avenue. If we can have the agent or the applicant please come up. If we can have the parties opposing the application or parties in interest of the application to be seated on my left-hand side. Just right here, so we know how many of you are applying to speak, okay? So before we proceed, I'm just going to mention what the committee has in front of us, or what's, has been filed. So we have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have the cover letter from the planners. Then we have email correspondence from Transportation Services. We have a staff report from Urban Forestry. We have correspondence in support slash no opposition from 534 Brunswick Avenue. We have correspondence in concern from the Annex Resident Association, and then we have correspondence in opposition from 365 Dupont Street. If you can please introduce yourself and give us a quick presentation of, of your application.
Sure. Good morning. My name is Tay Rook, planner for the owners of the property at 536, 538 Brunswick Avenue. The proposal before you today is related to the construction of a three-story townhouse complex containing six units. There are variances related to the driveway width, stair projections on the top level, in addition to setbacks to the front, side, and rear. Just to speak to the driveway width. The proposed variance related to the driveway width is 3.6 meters, whereas six meters is required. As the committee is well aware, there is a transportation report that has been provided. This is an application that has been gone through in a site plan approval process. The reduced driveway width is something that is a desire of both planning and urban design in terms of minimizing the streetscape and the impact of the streetscape, breaking up the streetscape along Brunswick Avenue. Currently on site right now, there are no driveways leading into the two houses onto the property. And as a result of that, the reduced driveway width is something that is desirable from a streetscape and something that's contextual from a streetscape perspective in the area. In addition to that, the concern about safety, as indicated by Transportation Department, we did through the site plan approval process indicate that we will be providing warning systems, lighting systems for cars that will be entering and exiting the driveway into the building. In addition, for warning systems for pedestrians that are walking along Brunswick Avenue as well. Furthermore, one additional thing related to the driveway width itself. The intent was to preserve as much landscaping along the Brunswick frontage as possible. As indicated in the elevation that's up on the screen right now, there is a tree that's shown, that is an existing tree, that we would, would have to be removed as a result of widening the driveway. And I would submit to committee, having a wider driveway, driveway aisle, from a safety perspective, is probably less safer from a pedestrian access perspective because it's a wider width and there's potential for cars, both going in and out of the site. So reduced width has a controlled access into the driveway, into the parking area, and out of the parking area. And once again, warning systems will be provided on site. And in terms of traffic flow into the building itself, this is only for six parking spaces for the dwelling itself, so it's not a lot of traffic that's going in and out of this, out of the building. In addition, there are variances related to the stair projections on the third, on the top. And those were made to... I've indicated those stairs that lead to the third-story deck. Those are the boxes that have been highlighted in orange on top of the, of the roof line. Those are the projections that are, that the main wall heights are being sought for at 13.5 meters. These are small elements on top of the third story and have no impact in terms of massing or structure as they're setback from the front and the rear. And if you see it from the side elevation, which again is the orange highlighted area at the top, it's been sloped downwards to the rear of the property or rear lot line to ensure that there's no massing or impacts that will be associated with the properties to the existing house to the rear. So the variance relates to the highest point of the triangular piece along the roof line itself. In addition, there are variances related to FSI, and I would submit to committee, this is a very tightly knit area that has various types of tenures and dwelling types that exist in the area in terms of townhouses, singles, semis, in addition to apartment buildings that also exist on the property. The existing property itself, right now, if you combine the two houses on the two lots, has an approximate FSI of 1.9 times FSI, and the variance that we're seeking is 2.07, so it's a nominal increase from what's existing on ground today, albeit in a different form. In terms of... In terms of the property itself, the property is located right at the cor... Right at the corner, and these properties have, that have been highlighted in green, and it's not very clear, but I'll point. Those are properties that are existing in the area that are two times or greater in terms of FSI. And from a contextual perspective, this is something that's more than appropriate, does fit within the existing neighborhood context. And that is one that's consistent in terms of bill form, in terms of impacts, and will not create any impacts that is, that is not uncharacteristic of the area itself. There are variances related to the front yard setback.
About five minutes, if you can just quickly wrap up?
Just to be sure, there is a setback variance related to the west side yard for zero meters. We did meet with the neighbors immediately to the west outside. There is, we did make some provisions in terms to satisfy their concerns. On the left, you'll see two mark two, orange marks on the left. At the top is where there's an existing gas line on the adjacent neighbor. What we'll, what we have committed to do is provide some sort of a gap for accessibility, so they won't have to remove those lines, and that's something that we will do. In addition to that, there was a concern about an existing window at the rear, which is a second orange dashed area. And we will be setting back .045 meters along that area to provide the gap in terms of lighting. So that, in terms of that, in addition to that, just to be sure, just to be clear, we will be entering the necessary agreements with the neighbors as it relates to foundations and construction work, and that's something that will be done during the construction process. As a result of that, the neighbors to the west, and they could confirm it, have no issues related to the proposal itself. And finally, just one more thing with regards to the rooftop deck variance that is being sought. The extent of the rooftop deck isn't the entire third story. You'll note the, the extent provided by the two dashed lines. In addition, at the rear of the deck, there's a planter that's being provided, which will be planted with cedars to provide further mitigation in terms of views and privacy and noise as well, and it's setback from the adjacent property to the south. And you'll also note on file that there has been a letter of support that's been provided by the committee to the neighbor at the south supporting the application. And the neighborhood itself... You look through the area in terms of elevated decks, rooftop decks, this is something that is found throughout the neighborhood. And in terms of impacts and in terms of views and issue, and issues associated with that, is something that's already existing in the area today.
Okay, thank you very much. So if there's any further questions, we'll ask them after you have a chance to rebut the, the concerns being raised by the adjacent neighbor. So if we can have the neighbor please come up and introduce themselves and their address as well.
Yeah, hi, my name's Rob Fillmore. We own 365 Dupont Street. We had a problem with the zero clearance on the, I guess, east side of the building, their west side. They've made provisions so that we can access the gas lines, and there's a window in the back that they're going to step back at the .45 meters as per the code. We agree to that. If they do that, we have no problems with the application.
Okay, panel members, do you have any other questions? Thank you very much. So if the agent can please come up. So in regards to this agreement with the neighbors on the west side, is that going to be reflected in any revisions to the site plans?
Yes, it will be. Unfortunately, this is something that's come, came into agreement today, so we don't have revised plans, but we can provide revised site plans and revised plans to the committee once they're finalized.
How about a condition in terms of verbally specifying? So is there anything that you would propose in terms of how to...
Unfortunately, I can't, we can't, I don't know exact dimensions that these, that will be, so I don't want to be committed to that. But what we can indicate, and I can submit today after the hearing, is showing the areas where we will be providing the necessary setbacks for the gas lines and for the windows at the rear.
So how about the plan that you showed us on the projector? If you can just quickly write, bubble in the, the changes and specify exactly what you're thinking in terms of the meter setback. So that's something that we can potentially attach to our decision.
Obviously, this is an approximate location of the rear, window at the rear. So there will be a .045 meter setback from that window along a certain length of that stretch. In addition, in terms of the setback that's required here, we do need to speak with the architect and the engineers with regards to this in terms of the exact dimension, but there will be a gap to allow for servicing for the gas lines at the front.
So madam...
In terms, sorry, so I know you're asking for a specific dimension, it's just I'm not, don't know what those dimensions would be at this time.
So madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, how do you think we should proceed? Like, should he bubble in those changes and just specify that a setback will be introduced to the window as well as the...
We don't have all the information. I mean, if he doesn't have the information for us, how can we proceed?
I mean, this, this is something that could be dealt through, like a civil matter.
It can be, and I think, I think at the end of the day, if the committee verbally writes in a condition saying there will be a setback in the area of the window and where the gas lines will be, should be satisfactory. This is the agreement, it's on record as us providing those setbacks, and I think that would be satisfactory to the neighbor as well. In addition to that, we will be have, we will have to finalize site plan approval for this application. So it will be tied to the site plan agreement as well. But we are committed to do that, but at the end, if he wants, if the committee wishes to provide a verbal condition and wishes for us to provide plans after the hearing, we could do that as well.
How about the condition to introduce a setback along the rear west side window? And then a setback along the west side next to the gas line?
Can you add? Could you add through site plan approval to that sentence?
Well, you can keep it kind of general at the owner would provide a setback for the gas line at the northeast corner and the...
Northwest.
Corner, sorry. So owner would provide a setback on the northeast corner?
Northwest.
Northwest corner?
Northwest.
For a gas line?
Correct.
For neighbors?
Yes.
For accessing the neighbor's gas line?
Yes. Correct.
Window at 365 Dupont, okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any other questions? Okay, if there is no other questions, we're in committee discussion. Discussion.
I'm comfortable with the application. I had some doubts initially about the massing and the height variance, but I'm satisfied that this will be appropriate.
I agree. I think just the fact that the, all the properties front onto Dupont makes a significant difference. And, yeah.
I, my first thought was that it read like an apartment building rather than, rather than townhomes, but the Dupont frontage and...
And there's some, some consideration has gone into the actual building design in terms of limiting the impacts on the neighbors on Brunswick Avenue. Okay, any other comments?
I just think that this application is going to come back to us again.
Okay.
I just wanted to add, I know there, that the applicant provided discussion about site plan and narrower driveways, but I do have a report from Transportation asking for the 5.5 meters. I just throw that, I just throw that out there, just because it wasn't raised before. But it is going through site plan approval.
I mean, my thought on the driveway is it is a fairly unique situation, and I, I don't see it as necessary.
I mean, it is an improvement to the site for sure, anyway.
Widening that driveway is going to have other issues and...
Well, landscaping, et cetera.
Yeah, and the practicality of that shared drive is going to be called into question by it.
I also do believe the narrow driveway is more desirable on the, for the neighborhood, specifically thinking that, that driveway will front onto Brunswick Street rather than Dupont. Okay, any other comments? Okay, so on your motion?
I would move approval of the application, subject to the conditions we've outlined.
And forestry?
Forestry condition number two, as I believe it to be an appropriate development of the site that does need foretests.
Okay, so madam genius, madam Secretary Treasurer, you have to, to repeat the conditions in terms of the setbacks, or you have them down? terms of the setbacks, or you have them down?
Um, this is what I drafted so far. So if the owner talks about a double setback at the northeast corner, the property can be little contrast to the gas line from the end, to provide a setback on the rear window at the rear of the.
Okay, so a motion to approve the variance application, including the two outlined conditions and the forestry condition, has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a second there? Second, Madam Omen, all in favor? All in favor? Dissenting?
Dissenting, yes.
Okay, Mr. Russell, dissent. So the application has been approved. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming out. Item number two, 66 Triller Avenue. The committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a staff report from community planning. We also have a staff report from Transportation Services and Urban Forestry. And then we have correspondents in concern from 24 Grafton Avenue. Okay, if we can have the agent applicant please come up, and the parties in interest of this application also be seated on my right-hand side. Okay, if you can quickly give us.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Victor Rosa, representing the owner of the property at 66 Triller Avenue.
Just one second. Are there still any parties opposing or in interest of this application? 66 Triller Avenue?
If I might interject by stating that we had the conversation outside, the, the neighbors that we're representing here, of course, had issues with the parking condition. And also, we had an owner representative of a property that's just south and to the west with respect to the potential overlook condition of the third floor deck, which we have gone into discussions and appeased their concerns. I think I should start by commenting to committee the history of this particular property. The last permit issued for this, for this municipal address was for a two-family dwelling within this, this structure. The, the structure has been in terrible, terrible condition for many, many years. It's been abandoned, it needs attention, and every neighbor in, in the area is in favor of giving it the right attention. And that's why we're presenting this proposal. Before you, it was a proposal that converts from the existing two-family dwelling to the use of the, the, the building as a seven-unit dwelling with conversion of the interior space to incorporate six one-bedroom units and one two-bedroom units on the third floor. That's why we have this increased, incremental increase on the third floor of about 10 square meters. In terms of the floor space index, the existing condition is at 1.19 times the lot area. In the new consideration, we have to include the basement area because we are creating a dwelling unit, two dwelling units within the basement. So that's why you have a floor space index as per the requested variance. More importantly, I'd like to speak to the parking, which we are aware of the deficiency of the parking. There have been conversations with the, the multiple owner from the front of this particular dwelling. There is potential for entering into a long-term lease agreement to accommodate the required parking, to facilitate the lack of the five parking spaces being cited. I also would like to add that this is in an area that's well-served and within walking distance to Queen Street to the south. It's well-served by public transit, and I think the owners are prepared to move forward in the direction of providing bicycle parking spaces within the site to facilitate the use of bicycles when weather permits, because it is close to a system of parks and the accessible, accessibility for bicycle use is there. Also, I'd like to speak of the condition of the third floor deck. We, as you note on the plans, the west, the north and south elevations depict a one-and-a-half meter opaque screen privacy fence. I have added to the neighbors to the southwest, the fact that we are willing to wrap around about two feet of that five-foot screen to prevent that diagonal view to their potential backyard. You'll note that the deck is well-setback from the edge of the existing roof area, and also it has setbacks from the north and south. So I think with that combination will, will resolve the, any overlook, overlook issues. I put forth to the committee that it is a good development for this area. It does fill in with the character of the neighborhood. We have an existing multi-use just south, the building just south, and across the street we have the multi-apartment tower complex. So I think this proposal fits well in the character of the neighborhood. The minor variances before you, I think, are reasonable, and we are willing to accept the condition of any decision that you make to providing the, the parking required as per traffic planning comments. Also, it's worthy to note, we had comments, we spoke to the planner, the planner is on board with the particular dimensions, and again, we're willing to accept a condition based on the drawings that are presented. And also, if you would like to add that two-foot wraparound.
Okay, thank you very much. You have five minutes. Panel members, do you have any questions?
My issue as well with the parking. You have any public parking close by there?
Public parking?
Yes.
There's street parking, but within, close to that area, I don't recall there's public parking, like a, a green pea.
Yeah.
But maybe along Queen Street, there may, there might be.
I think there's a green pea.
I think there is along Queen Street.
Yeah.
You mentioned you had an opportunity to find the five spots off-site to enter into a lease. Are you going to be doing that, or?
That is the intent. The owner has had conversations with the owner of the, of the high-rise across the street, and there seems to be sufficient parking there that they can accommodate five spaces for a long-term lease.
And those off-site spots would meet the conditions of the Transportation Department?
Yes.
How about on-street parking? Do you know if there's any availability with the on-street parking?
I, I apologize, I didn't research the, the percentage of on-street parking available, but I think there is on-street parking. It's just a matter of the walking distance from the various residents.
Okay. Any other questions, panel members? Okay, so no more questions. So we're in committee discussion.
Through you, Madam Chair. My concern was the parking. It sounds like the surplus parking can be found through an off-site lease, which is a requirement of the Transportation Department, although they would be accepting cash-in-lieu if that were not an option, but it seems like that's something they could work out. So I would be comfortable approving this application, including the conditions in the planning report as well as the transportation report.
I mean, the.
What about his recommendation that he would put, he's willing to put in some bicycle parking?
Um, I mean, we could add it as a condition if, if we as a panel deem that.
I think that would be important.
Be a good thing to do.
Uh, so I'm just going to go out of committee. So how many bicycle parking are you thinking of providing onsite? Or are you able to provide a site?
I foresee that, given the area and the type of rental facilities, that the percentage of maybe half might not need, might not have a vehicle, even more. But I think if we propose three par, three bicycle rings for parking along the exterior, I think that would suffice, and, and of course, more can be added if the demand is there.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, yeah, so we could potentially put in a condition. The only, my only issue is with the transportation report. I mean, we sit here through a number of hearings, and we hear that there, the bylaws in terms of parking provisions don't necessarily meet the current demand in terms of how many people are driving cars and living in those units. So, so the unit will have seven, sorry, the apartment will have seven units, and then they're asking for five parking spots. Do you think that's sufficient, or?
Um, well, it goes by the parking ratio. I'm not sure if it's 1.25 per unit spots, but that's how it's calculated. I don't have a problem with having the extra parking because, or even the off-site spots secured, because even if those residents don't have vehicles, their guests may have vehicles, and so, I mean, the downtown's getting more congested, so if you can provide some spots, be it for the unit or to be used for visitors, I don't think that that's a bad thing.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to voice my concerns in terms of the bylaws versus the reality.
And they may change down the road. I mean, there has been a building approved with zero parking, but it's right on top of a subway line, so I don't think the city is quite there yet in a broader perspective to goals, parking, or less than you're asking for now.
Okay. So I'll need a motion then?
So through you, Madam Chair, I would be prepared to move approval of the application as I feel it meets the four tests, including the conditions outlined in the planning report dated October 26th, as well as the transportation report dated November 1st.
Forestry as well?
And forestry.
And how about the?
Number one, and then to also have a condition that three bicycle spots be put into the, into the exterior.
Okay. So a motion to approve, including the four conditions, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a second? Second there?
Second, uh, with the bicycle spots, yep.
So there's forestry, transportation, planning, oh, I'm not counting the individual.
Oh, there's two planning conditions, so.
Okay, so there's two planning conditions, okay, sorry, I'm not counting individual conditions. Okay, so, so forestry, two planning conditions, one transportation condition, and then the three bicycle parking being provided along the exterior. Okay, so it has been moved by Ms. Omen, second by Mr. Russell, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. A good day.
Thank you, you too. Okay, we move forward with item number 631 Alma Avenue. If we can have the agent or applicant please come up. If there's any parties in interest, please be seated on my left-hand side. The committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have the cover letter from the agent. We have correspondents in support from 27 Alma Avenue, and then we have correspondents opposition from, we have correspondents in opposition from also 27 Alma Avenue. So perhaps the agent can clarify that for us.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Jordan Kemp. I'm an associate with Bows Fields. We're the agent for the applicant. I just want to quickly note, I can make a presentation, but I'll quickly note that that letter of opposition has been rescinded, and there should be a follow-up email that I have a copy of from the owner at 27. Basically, the applicant walked him through his issues, did a site visit with him, and, and he said he had, he had a follow-up email where he indicated he had no, no, no further opposition.
Oh, yes, so we do have that letter. Yeah.
So, so, and, and it's my understanding that there are no letters of opposition to the application.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, so if you can give us a very short presentation.
Yes, absolutely. So it's a fairly straightforward application. In the existing building, basically, the variances are intended to recognize an existing condition. The existing two-story dwelling unit currently contains three units. It was destroyed by a fire, and now the applicant is looking to renovate that existing building and increase the number of units from three to four, and recognize the existing non-compliant conditions with respect to setbacks, building height, building depth, and there is one, one variance required to accommodate the new unit, which, which actually only relates to, to parking.
Okay. Okay, um, so we'll proceed with questions after the, the party in interest has spoken, okay? So if you can please come up and introduce yourself and your address.
My name is Karen O'Keefe. I live at 10 Alma Avenue down the street. My concerns were about the parking, because on our street, they already took away three parking spots to put in Bixi bikes. So that was my concern, but I, I have spoken to him now, and, and I think it's okay. They, they, I mean, there is a garage for three. It was just that one extra parking spot. Let's hope they take, use a bicycle or something like that, because there really isn't enough parking now with the condo going up and the construction right across the street on Duffin Street. They're building the two condos. There really is hardly any parking anymore. So I was worried about additional parking and about the soft landscaping, just the way that it sounded, because to me, it seems like construction on this house is done, and then I get this in the mail, so I thought they were going to redo something and get rid of the little paved lot that they have between the garage and the house. And I was worried that would set a precedent if they were allowed to build a whole building on the whole property. So that was my concern, but he's explained that that little lot is going to stay, and they're not going to be building on that, because I didn't know where this fourth unit was going to go.
Okay.
But I've known, I knew the people who lived there 20 years ago, and that it's the same little paved-in backyard, and apparently he's keeping it, so that was, so my, I think my concerns have been addressed.
Okay, perfect.
Do you have a chance to review the staff report saying that the?
There is no staff report.
The driveway becomes soft landscape?
Um, there is no staff report.
No staff.
Yeah, that was an amendment I didn't, that.
Oh, so there is no staff report in this item?
Okay.
Oh, number four.
Uh, we're number six.
Number six.
Thank you very much. Panelists, do you have any other questions? No? Thank you.
Want to submit this to anybody, like?
Uh, sure. If this is your, yes, if you've read submissions, you can submit it to Deputy Secretary Treasurer or a member of her staff. It's one of these two ladies. Thank you. So, yeah, if we can have the agent please come up. Perhaps you can speak to the rear soft landscaping issue.
Yes, sorry, I should have brought that up in my original presentation. So there was an, there was an error on our part in terms of the original waiver that was submitted, which requested a variance for zero rear yard soft landscaping. We revised that in a waiver, I believe it's dated October 31st, and I have a copy in case. I believe it has been circulated, but if you need a, a version of that, I can.
Perhaps we can just amend the variance application? That might be easier?
Yep.
So what is it?
So the amended, the amended variance for this rear soft landscaping is going to be 38.3% or 47.1 square meters.
Okay, so 38% or 47.1?
Sorry, that's 38.3% or, and 47.1 square meters.
Okay. Okay, and there's, there's no repetition. Okay, so you're, you're amending variance number one then?
Exactly, yep.
Okay, are there any other comments, questions? It's, it's great. So how are you achieving this change in terms of the soft landscaping?
So there, I, I believe that they will be tearing up whatever is there now and, and sorting it.
Okay, great. Panel members, if there's no more questions, we're in committee discussion or a motion?
I think that creation of a fourth unit is appropriate to the community. Parking discussions, we've gone both ways on, but falling short by one space is entirely a different thing than zero parking, and reflects the reality of, of central Toronto, so I'm comfortable with this, and would move approval if there's no further.
Uh, the amended application?
Of the, yes.
Okay, so changing variance number one from zero to 38.3% or 47.1 meters square. Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson, the amended application. Do we have a second there?
Okay.
Second, Mr. Russell, all in favor? So the application, the amended application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the committee. Appreciate it.
Item number 13, 55 Tilson Road. The committee has in front of us, do we have any parties opposing the application or interest of the application for 55 Tilson Road? Okay, if, if yes, if you can please be seated on my left-hand side. Okay, so the committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have the cover letter from the agent. We have copy and invoice from front yard parking pad. We have a staff report from Transportation Services and Urban Forestry, and then we We have a staff report from Transportation Services and Urban Forestry, and then we have correspondents in concern slash interest from sixty-two Tilson Road, as well as one forty-five Foreman Avenue. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, uh, members of committee. I'm Janice Robinson of Goldberg Group, representing the owner of fifty-five Tilson. Uh, so we did go outside, meet with the neighbors, and, um, they had been met with before, and this is an application that was, it was submitted last year right around the time when the, um, Davisville Village bylaw prohibiting garages was, uh, enacted, and it got revised to take the garage out. Uh, at that time, the length was reduced to seventeen meters. The height is currently, um, the height itself complies with the bylaw, and the length of seventeen meters complies with the bylaw, but it does result still in a floor space index variance. The neighbors that are here today are, um, the, there's one next, the, from right next door at fifty-seven Tilson, and then neighbors on Foreman. So as a result of the discussions, the, uh, length of the dwelling is being reduced to sixteen point five meters, and that results in a reduction in the variance number two. So I'm going to propose a variance revision to, um, a floor space index of point six nine five, which is a GFA of two hundred and one point six three square meters. So that's leaving the, you know, the side yards of the plans before you comply. It's, everything stays the same. It's just the building gets a little bit shorter to sixteen point five meters. In addition, the neighbors had concerns about the height of the dwelling, which the overall height does comply, but there's a wall height variance, and in this case, with the design, the wall height is the height. So as a result of the discussions, the revision is for variance three, three, four, and five, all of them, to be reduced to seven point eight meters.
Seven point eight four, did you say, meter?
Seven point eight zero.
Awesome.
Meters. So those are the revisions. Looking at the other variances, the, uh, front lot line variance is only because it's measured to the, um, ex- excavated front porch. Otherwise, the front yard complies. It lines up with the neighbor next door. The landscaping variance is because of the, uh, shared easement having to be counted as hard surface. Um, in the case of the parking space, uh, this is a situation where they have a parking pad permit. This is the type of design with parking pads that you get when, um, the garage, the integral garage is taken out, and the variances that result are that there's zero, uh, parking spaces. In this case, the full length of the parking space is within the property. None of it encroaches on the right-of-way. So I'd be pleased to answer any other questions. I think that's.
Uh, so we'll proceed with questions when we have, once we have the interested parties.
Sure.
Speak. Okay, so would anyone like to speak? Um, just confirming the changes or, uh, raising any other concerns or issues. If you can please introduce yourself and your address.
Yes, I'm Derek Karren. I live at fifty-seven Tilson Road, which is right next door. Uh, so we met and we discussed, and on behalf of myself and the other neighbors, we agree with the changes.
Okay, perfect. Panel members, any questions? Nope, thank you. Okay, do we have any questions of the agent? Okay, no questions, so we're in committee discussion.
I'm satisfied with the changes, um, as a matter of fact, they do want, they do, uh, respond to my, my inquiries, and I appear to move a motion for acceptance of the amended application, um, by Ms. Robinson.
Okay.
I'll second with forestry condition number one.
Okay, so a motion to approve the amended application, just to clarify, so variance number two under twenty thirteen has been amended to zero point six nine five times, which is two oh one point sixty-three meters squared. Variance number three, uh, variance number four, ver- variance number five, under bylaw five sixteen and twenty thirteen, has been amended to seven point eight, uh, zero meters. Okay, so, uh, a motion to approve the amended application has been moved by Mr. Russell, including the forestry condition. Second, Ms. Omen, all in favor? So the amended application has been approved. Thank you very much for coming up. Uh, so that's not a variance?
Not a variance.
But, but that would, um, in order for the, uh, floor space index to come down, it has to come from somewhere, so it would, it would be from the depth. Okay, thank you. Okay, so item number twenty-one, uh, nine Gibson Avenue. If we can have the agent or applicant, please come up, and then any parties opposing or interest of the applications, please be seated on my left-hand side. Um, okay, so before we proceed, I would just like to know how many, uh, people would like to speak? Five people, okay? And to just please make sure to not repeat what the others have said, and, uh, it would be great if you can select a spokesperson. Okay. Okay, perfect, great, thank you. Um, so before we proceed, I'm just gonna mention what the committee has in front of us. We have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have the cover letter from the agent. We have a staff report from Urban Forestry. We have correspondents opposition from twelve Gibson Avenue, from the ABC Resident Association, uh, from seventeen Gibson Avenue, eleven Gibbs- Gibson and seven Gibson, and then we have a twenty-nine signature petition opposition by various owners and occupants on Gibson Avenue. Okay, and, um, if you can please introduce yourself, and then if you can give us a short presentation of, of the application.
Hi, my name is Sean Freeman. I'm the architect representing my client, uh, Dr. Anderson from nine Gibson Avenue, and she's here with her family as well. I just want to begin, I just want to give to the committee some copies of, um, some backup material which wasn't submitted.
Okay. So, uh, do you have extra copies so we can also share it with the?
When we were outside with our neighbors, we did give them some copies of this information. It's the, uh, FSI averages, um, that are taken from the, uh, street that we're on.
Has the people opposed this, they receive a copy of this?
Uh, yes, they have.
We handed them one or two copies when we were outside. I don't think we had enough for everybody.
Okay, you can proceed.
Yeah, so my client, Dr. Anderson, purchased this home, uh, for her family. She's, her three kids and her parents to enjoy. She's strived to design this home that fits her needs and is respectful of its location in the Ramsay Park neighborhood. Her goals are to upgrade this home, which was in very bad repair when she purchased it, um, to the standards of a modern home today. Uh, this home was in very poor condition and required a complete overhaul. The building permit, um, is active now and was applied for, um, soon after she, uh, purchased the home, and, um, that application is being built according to the building code and didn't have any zoning variances. Um, this work is ongoing and has been executed in a very professional manner with all inspections that were required. The variances before you today are for additional work required to make this home fit the needs of Dr. Anderson and her family. In discussions with her neighbors, she has agreed, uh, to lessen the impact of the proposed garage by reducing its size, and this also increases the area of soft landscaping, which are two of the variances before you. At this point, I wanted to mention that, um, Dr. Anderson also, um, has decided to eliminate variances one, three, four, and eight.
Okay, so do you, uh, so.
I marked up a public hearing notice for you, which I'd like to give you, if that's possible.
Uh, but if we can just repeat it for the public record as well, and, um, so the neighbors can hear.
It's marked up.
Okay. So variance number one, under bylaw twenty thirteen, is being deleted.
That's correct.
Variance number three, under bylaw twenty thirteen, is also being deleted. That's in regards to the canopy.
That's correct.
Uh, variance number four, not sure it's, um, it's boxed in, but there's, um.
Um, it's being deleted, number four.
Number four is also being deleted?
Yes.
Okay, so twenty thirteen, the roof eaves, uh, is being deleted.
Yes.
Variance number five, landscaping, uh, rear yard soft landscaping, under twenty thirteen, is being changed to forty-five point five seven, uh, percentile, which is forty point eighty-five meter squared.
Correct.
Variance number seven is also being changed to, um, this rear garage floor area to forty point, forty point eighty meter squared from forty-nine. And then variance number eight, um, is also being deleted?
Being deleted, exactly.
Okay, so variance number eight is also being deleted, uh, which is the roof eaves, uh, of the rear garage. Okay, so those are quite changes. Um, so perhaps in your last two minutes, if you can quickly let us know.
Oh, absolutely. So I, I'm gonna speak very quickly about the garage variances and why they should be considered minor. There's the landscaped open space, which is, um, not unreasonable in its request because, uh, typically along the street, and I can, if you give me more time, I can show you examples of the, actually, I'll pass this to Jennifer to put up. There's two photos of our adjacent neighbors that have almost zero landscaped open space that's soft in their yards. That's the house to the west at number elebs- eleven, and if Jennifer can switch that, the house to the east at number seven, which also has primarily a deck and hard landscaping. We're proposing, um, the number before you, which, um, is forty-five point five seven percent. Sorry, uh, believe, yeah, forty-five point five seven percent, which is very close to the required fifty percent landscaped open space. I can also, if I have the time, which I'm not sure I do, go on, but maybe you'll ask me questions afterwards. Um, the other variance, which is the area of the garage, garages are very typical along the street. I think I submitted photographs already. This is an aerial view of the street. There's garages that are, represent about half the houses on the street, and very often, they're at zero setback. And the zero setback is, um, actually something that the two adjacent neighbors have requested as being desirable if the garage is to be built. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna skip out of the garage variances and now to the FSI variance.
Okay, sorry, so you have five minutes, so we'll discuss the FSI once you come back for the review.
Okay, okay, I'll go as fast as I can.
Can I just ask one question related to that? I'm just looking at my notes.
Absolutely.
I can't find it in your letter, but can you just confirm that your existing is ten point three eight and then your addition is sixteen point sixteen square meters? I'm not sure where I read it.
So our FSI on the existing house is one point zero four.
One point.
Times the area of the lot. We're requesting in our variance one point one two, uh, the areas of the lot. The average on the existing street i- in the chart before you is one point two five.
Okay.
Okay, and there's committee decisions before you as well.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll have the, the neighbors and interests, please come up, introduce themselves and the, their address.
Hi, my name is Candace Crouchenhardt. I live at seven Gibson, the attached unit, uh, to nine Gibson. I'm here today representing myself and my husband in opposition to the variances requested by the applicant. It gives us no joy to do so. Uh, this is not personal. It's based entirely on how the project at nine Gibson will adversely affect our home, our enjoyment of our living space, and the Gibson neighborhood as a whole. I'm gonna put up three, uh, photos on the screen. The first shows the before images of, uh, my house and the purchased house on my right. The second, uh, shows the applicant's proposed new facade, superimposed on the original and structure, structure, and the third shows, uh, a view of the two properties from the rear with her superimposed new structure. As you know, under the Planning Act, there are four tests which any requested variance must meet, and if they fail any one of those tests, they must be denied. In this case, the requested variances fail not just one of the four tests, but all of them. First, the proposed variances are clearly not minor in scope or importance. We're not talking about a mere adjustment of a few inches or even a few feet. Certain of her variance requests differ from zoning bylaws from anywhere from twenty to one hundred percent. And just based on numerical scale alone, the requested variances are not minor adjustments, but major deviations from the zoning bylaws. In addition, these variances can't be minor if they have important adverse side effects on neighboring properties, and hers clearly do. Our former neighbors at nine Gibson had a rear addition, but the deck was set back seven feet from our common boundary line, thus re- respecting our privacy. We wouldn't object to an addition with a seven-foot setback, but we certainly object to one which has an eastern boundary line right on our common lot line, hemming us in with a brick wall. So it's kind of like, do you want this, or this, or this? This proposal frankly doesn't even make common sense. How is the applicant going to maintain this wall when there's no room on her side to do so? For example, how could she do any tuck pointing without coming on our property line? She can't. Recar- requiring a reasonable setback of her eastern wall is good planning and good common sense. We've proposed such a setback to the applicant, but she's not responded. In addition, the construction of a large addition at the rear of our home with zero setback from our common lot line will damage our sightlines to Ramsay Park, the free flow of air and light, create unwanted shadowing in the evening in an already small backyard. So the applicant's proposed rear addition is inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, thus failing another of the four tests. But perhaps of greatest concern to us is the proposal for a third-story deck above her requested rear addition. The, the deck will jut out from her proposed addition at least sixteen feet in length, allowing a person on the east end of the deck to peer down from on high into our entire backyard and into our home from the westernmost window, which you can see up there, on our second floor, which would be an invasive and frankly insensitive, insensitive intrusion of our, uh, privacy. Second, the applicant's variance requests are also inconsistent with the official plan, which sets a high standard for development in the Ramsay Park neighborhood. Um, my neighbor Audrey McKinney will discuss this in greater detail. In his materials presented to the committee, Mr. Freeman insists that he and the applicant are merely trying to improve a home that was in poor condition, bring it up to the standards of the twenty-first century. This assertion is extremely misleading. We, like most of our neighbors, have made substantial improvements to our homes, bringing them up to the twenty-first century, but we've done this without requesting or needing any variances or exterior expansions. So Mr. Freeman's justification simply doesn't hold water. In conclusion, I would submit that variances should be granted only if they are truly minor in scope and do not adversely affect neigh- neighboring properties. The variances being requested here fail on both counts. The applicant simply wants to squeeze as much living space as she can out of her lot, well above what the law allows, regardless of the consequence to neighboring properties. She's attempting to rely on precedent.
Okay, sorry, so you have five minutes. You can just quickly wrap.
I will. Well, we, we disagree with the precedents. We think it's a red herring. Each variance request should stand or fall on its own based on the four tests, including whether the granting of the variance would have an adverse effect on neighboring properties. So we argue that the variances before you do fail the four tests, and we respectfully request the committee to deny these variants.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions? I just have a question, sorry, if you can just come back in regards to second and third, uh, story rear decks.
Yeah.
So how common are they on that side of the street?
Second floor. Jordan could probably answer this better than I can.
Okay, so if someone else can ask, perfect, thank you. So we'll have the next neighbor, please come up and introduce themselves.
Hello, um, my name's Jordan Ross, and my wife Emily, who's over there, and I live in number eleven Gibson, which is immediately on the west side of nine Gibson. Today, we were gonna focus on an issue, on a couple issues, uh, for us. I mean, the biggest issue, um, when we were thinking at this at a high level was the added structure sort of walling us in, because of how they are originally drawn in the October sixteenth drawings, namely a garage that spanned the full width of the lot line, and also having the addition of a balcony, so where we had no wall close to us, because it was set back, we now would have one. And then on top of that, there would be a deck that actually as drawn was outwards by another two feet from the balcony below it, and then only had a, uh, regular height glass guard that would be around it. So there were, you know, privacy issues that we were, you know, quite concerned about when we saw the plans, and I think what complicated it for us was we only knew about this hearing and the plans, uh, in the middle of October, so we hadn't seen anything before that, and, uh, my wife and I went on a delayed honeymoon that we never took, so we were out of the country as part of it too, and we couldn't have discussions. But what I wanna be, you know, clear and upfront about is that the changes that Dr. Anderson's agent, um, uh, proposed, you know, they were sent to us on the. Anderson's agent proposed, you know, they were sent to us on the first, and we've seen them, and it starts to move things away from us, and I acknowledge that, and, you know, from Emily's and my perspective, we're thankful for that. But we don't think that that answers the issue, because all of the sudden, here are these plans that were not before committee on the balcony side of things, and we have, you know, sort of plans that are not official as part of those October sixteenth plans, and we, you know, wonder to ourselves, should these plans not be finalized, brought before committee, so that every neighbor who has an interest in them can review them and comment? Yes, these changes are positive, and we're thankful that they were responding to our concerns, but we are quite concerned about how that would impact the neighbor on number seven still, because it's like, okay, you're shifting away from us, but it doesn't solve, you know, the same issue that another neighbor was raising. And to us...
So before you proceed, are you speaking of a deferral? Are you seeking a deferral?
I, I think on those issue, a deferral would be helpful just to speak with everybody and for sure know that everybody understands what we're agreeing to, because even with these new plans, there needs to be clarity. So if they were out there, people could understand what they're agreeing to, and I, I don't do that to be difficult. I've had some productive conversations with Dr. Anderson, and that's important, but we were up on the eleventh hour on some of these issues, so that, that's sort of the problem that we have. But, you know, we acknowledged, clearly this is better for us, and we're hopeful, you know, to get to a resolution. What we had offered up was additional meetings with the immediate neighbor on number seven, which is where we had the initial discussion about some of these changes. And for, you know, reasons that, you know, ultimately, Dr. Anderson wasn't comfortable having those, and that's fine, but it still puts me and my wife here today, talking about something that, you know, does help alleviate some of our concerns, but wasn't part of this broader conversation that we were having, and we just wanna make that clear, so.
Okay.
In terms of, with the question you asked Candace with respect to balconies, when we were preparing to talk about the other style of balcony, what, you know, came up from that for us was we noticed a lot of balconies on Gibson were set back into the living space, into the FSI, and you can see that from numbers, I think thirty-three to twenty-seven, they were. They are, where they're on the third floor, they were pushed back. There are second-floor balconies, one on number five, for example, but it's a second-floor balcony, and helps with some of the privacy concerns. Again, you know, the proposal that was brought to us was to add privacy screens and somewhat shrink in the balcony, and that's really helpful, and, you know, we commend Dr. Anderson on that. It's just that we, it doesn't solve the issue for all neighbors, and we're sort of put in this position where, yes, it's good for my wife and I, but it hasn't solved the global issue that we were talking about, you know, from the beginning of this. In terms of other decks, so the south side of the street is what I was just talking about, which is where we live. There is a north side of Gibson, and there are decks on there as well. But again, you know, those decks often are in pairs, so that you have a deck next to a deck, and then you have also decks that have, you know, full wood screening. And again, you know, I actually think that Dr. Anderson and her team would be able to come to a solution that, you know, satisfies everyone potentially, but because of how this has come up late, it hasn't happened, and today outside, there couldn't be any resolution. You know, we, my, my wife and I tried to help bridge that gap a little bit, because it's important to us that sort of everybody gets what they want, but it, but it's not there, and there's clear good reasons brought by a lot of people. So just because the impact on us was lessened, I don't know that that answers the question for us, and I guess that, that's what we wanted to try to convey, because those concerns of having a wall right next to us and so on were very real to us, and they've, they've gotten better, and that's great, but we're wondering, you know, can we get somewhere further along with more accurate drawings, more times, and having people to see that, so.
Okay, perfect. So you're almost at six minutes, I gave you extra time because I interrupted you with a question.
Thank you.
So panel members, do you have any questions?
I, I guess it was asked before, are you asking for a deferral?
From my perspective, I think a deferral, yes, would be helpful, so that people could see this and we could have further negotiations.
And, and your neighbors?
Well, that, I think that was the big hangup. Outside, there wasn't much productive conversation, and part of it was just premised on this notion that we need, they need to understand it. And, you know, but, so I'll leave that where, where it's at.
Okay. I'm not sure how to proceed. Okay, so maybe we'll, so if, if we can have a spokesperson for, for the neighbors, speak to the deferral. Actually, no, let's first have the applicant respond to the request for the deferral.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I didn't realize that five minutes would be allotted to every opposition.
If you can just introduce yourself again, just for the public record.
I'm Jennifer Anderson, the owner of nine Gibson. I have been waiting for this appointment with the committee for about five months, and it's now November. I would like to close in the back of my house. Everything's been waiting for this day. So if we defer it, I don't sure what that means, so you might wanna outline that to me, because it means that I can't move and close in my house, it's, winter's coming, until I know what's happening. My particular concern, since I've removed four variances out of the eight, one, the two neighbors wish to have occurred. The two others I've reduced to virtually close to what you want, what the variance requires, it leaves only one variance. The one variance is the FSI. I would like that decided today.
Okay, so you'd like to proceed, I mean, in terms of the deferral...
I cannot close in my house without it.
Okay, in terms of the deferral, I'm not sure what the schedule looks like for CVA hearings, but I'm assuming it will not be heard back within three months? Okay, so yeah, so if we do defer the application, it'll be heard next year in the first quarter. Okay, panel members, would you, how would you like to proceed in terms of the deferral?
I'd like to hear about the neighbors.
Okay, so we'll have one spokesperson for the neighbors speak to the actual deferral. It'll be just to the deferral, rather than the application. So would... No, no, we're just talking about a deferral. So would you like to have more time to discuss these applications with the agent, as well as to, to potentially negotiate? Okay, so just general agreement, so maybe I can have one person representing the, the neighbors say that they are, if you can also introduce yourself, you can just come up to a podium, and then we'll speak, speak to the deferral, and then if the deferral does not go through, we'll once again ask the neighbors for their concerns in terms of the...
My name is Audrey McKinney, and I'm the owner of number eighteen Gibson Avenue. On behalf of the neighbors, I am prepared to propose a deferral of the approval of this application.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. So panel members, how do you feel about a deferral?
I am concerned about whether it's going to have a meaningful result when the applicant expresses that they don't want to do it. It could be helpful, but I'm concerned about whether it's likely.
I definitely, yeah, sorry.
No, I was gonna say, it's, it's, it's a tough decision. I, I think as my fellow panel members know, that I'm, I always think it's meaningful to have discussions wherever possible, to, to work things out in an amicable way. I'm not, I agree with Mr. Carlson, I'm not sure what the end result would be. It sounds like the, the house is, is not closed, it wants to be, the applicant wants it closed for the winter, but regardless, whatever way decision goes, that problem may not be solved, whether it's a, a decision or a deferral, I don't know. So we need to kind of look at, at the number of residents that have come out, and again, I think if it can be resolved, it's better all around.
I mean, I, yeah, I echo your comment in terms of the usefulness of the deferral of actually changing the application itself, but at the same time, I note that there has been, I would argue, substantial changes to the application. As the owner mentioned, four variances have been removed, some variances have been lowered. It's, it's, it is a lot to process, just for us, as well as the, the neighbors in concern, when there's many of them in concern here, so.
On the one hand, if we hear it today, I have, I do have real concerns with the substance of this application, and at the same time, these are reductions, but yeah, these are substantial, these are meaningful revisions. I'm conflicted on the deferral, I'll hold on the application.
Is this a difficult one? The neighbor has presented, the, the applicant has presented a position, the neighbors have presented another position, and quite frankly, I'm still not in a position to be definitely for or against the application. The difficulty here is if we deny the application, the applicant has to go through an appeal process, and it's going to be much longer. If we gotta defer, we probably, they could have resolved the matter within the timeframe and, and be back before this committee in, in a shorter timeframe than, than, than what our process is, because at this point, I'm not sure we, how I will, what I will do. I'm not sure I will, it, it, you, it, no one is assured that the, the application must be approved. It's, we're not sure about this thing. We have, we have received arguments before from one of the opposition of why this, why this application itself is not minor. So there's a risk both ways. So at this point, I, I won't, I won't give the committee any, any guidance, but...
We're in committee, yeah.
I won't give the committee any guidance. It's just that, you know, it's just that there are risks both ways. There are risks that I may not support the application, there are risks that I might not support the, the, the excessive, the extension to another time. So I, we don't know, we don't, we're not bounded to approve the application. That's, that's, that's the important thing we have to remember. And, and if, and if, if there, there are breaches of the municipal act, the committee cannot, or should not violate those breaches and, and approve an application, and, you know, I, I always like to, to have discussions, and I know the discussion will bring us back here faster.
Okay. So, so panel members, any other discussion points? If not, I'll need a motion.
All right. On consideration, I think I would like, I would like to see this redistributed, even if it doesn't change from their vision today, I would like to see plans. So I would move deferral of the application to allow for recirculation and for us to see updated plans, with the strong recommendation that the applicant continue discussions with their neighbors.
I, I would second that.
So including recirculation fees and coming back to this panel within probably three months, or?
I would second that application.
Okay, so a motion to defer has been moved by Mr. Carlson. It has been seconded by Mr. Russell, all in favor? So the application has been deferred. Thank you very much for coming out.
Come back within three months.
So once again, we strongly advise you to discuss these matters before they're heard at the committee. Okay, so the committee, we're at recess at twelve fifteen. Okay, so the committee, we're at recess at 12:15.